Welcome to the school board meeting for the Carson City School District. I'm going to call this meeting to order and we will begin with the flag salute by trustee Mike Walker.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item two, adoption of the agenda as submitted for possible action. Motion by Ron and a second by Ryan. Do we have any further discussion or public comment on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and the motion carries. And we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item three, superintendent's report for information only. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I have not prepared a formal presentation this evening so that we can move right on to honoring our employees, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. We'll go ahead and move on to agenda item four, board reports and board member comments for information only. Do we have a representative from Carson High School here today? Okay. How about before you, Joe, I'll go ahead and start with Jeremiah from Pioneer High School. Oh, and I have to pass him the mic.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. A reminder for students that the end of the school is getting close and end of course exams will be held next week, or the week of May 16th to May 19th. Be sure to check in with your teachers for that extra support to get through your classes and the tests. There will be a project discovery day at Mount Rose tomorrow, April 26th. A great, a thank you to all the students and staff who helped make the PHS blood drive a great success. Many lives will be saved because of their generosity. A thank you to Mr. Lorian and the PHS students who participated in the art show last Friday at the Brewery Arts Center. Prom is this weekend, Saturday, April 29th, at the Brewery Arts Center from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. Tickets are available in the office during lunch and before and after school. A thank you goes out to Q's BBQ for their generous donations for our prom. The students would like to congratulate Mr. Don Blant and Phil Mullison on the selection of employee of the year. Thank you for all your dedication and the great work you do for the students. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Go ahead, Joe.
I have no report.
Okay.
Seiliger. I have a few announcements. Principal Zona and Vice Principal Macy would like everyone to know, next Tuesday, May 2nd, are the science CRTs for the fifth graders. And Thursday, May 25th, will be the final music program of the year, a choir and band concert that starts at 5:30 PM. Wednesday, May 31st, is the fifth grade promotion at 9:00 AM at Seiliger. Followed by Thursday, June 1st, is the annual field day from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. And Friday, June 2nd, the last day barbecue, an annual event at Seiliger at 11:30 AM.
No report. Not tonight.
Just a congratulation to Eagle Valley with their Jedis taking third in this nation. Right? First time, so we're pretty excited. So now they're going to go on to Worlds, so we just want to congratulate them for their victory.
Okay, and just for Carson Middle School, if you haven't had an opportunity to eat dinner yet tonight, stop by the Pizza Factory on your way because they are donating, and mention Carson Middle School because this is a fundraiser for the eighth grade promotion party. And for Fritsch Elementary School, if you don't have dinner plans for tomorrow, come between 4:00 and 8:00 PM to the south, Carson Street McDonald's. It will be McTeacher Night, and so teachers at Fritsch will be cooking and serving, and Mr. Brown and Mr. Farnworth will be there as well. Okay, do we have any reports from the Nevada Association of School Boards? Okay. Oh, and we have the Carson High School, Carson High School representative, oh, here he comes, I see Mr. Bossa jogging, so he'll get here in just a minute and give us his report. And I'll pass it down.
First off, I would like to mention the fact that Carson High Student Council just returned this past weekend from a state leadership conference held at Spring Valley High School in Las Vegas. So next year's council is really excited to take what they learned from that conference and implement it into some great ideas to bring some better school spirit, a lot of more participation in things of that like to Carson High School next year. Also, we would like to congratulate the efforts of our Carson High School robotics team as they traveled to Houston, Texas for the Worlds competition and got 50th out of 128, so that's pretty impressive. And we would like to wish our Carson High School FBLA the best of luck as they are currently in Las Vegas for their state competition and conference as well. In addition, next week, for the, the next two weeks is AP testing, so we would just like to remind seniors to go into your classes and get the help you need in preparation for those tests and... Sorry. Sorry, thank you.
Anticipation.
Thank you, Mr. Bossa. Do we have any other announcements at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item five, association reports for discussion only. Do we have any association reports at this time? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, trustees, administrators, I'd just like to say on behalf of CESA, congratulations to all our winners for classified employee and certified and administrators and whomever else out there. My name's Loretta Marsen, I'm VP of CESA, and I would just like to invite people who haven't heard that we will be celebrating our fifth annual CESA banquet, and that will be held on Sunday, May 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Fandango Casino. And this is where we honor our classifieds, but anyone who would like to come and participate, you can get in touch with Terry Connolly at Transportation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other association reports, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item six, public comment. This is the time when comments may be made by members of public on any matter within the authority of this board, and please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before such action is taken, and members of the public are encouraged to comment at that time. And although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on the agenda for action before the board. And making public comments, speakers are asked to come to the podium, sign in, speak into the microphone, and identify themselves for the record. They are also asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and to not simply repeat comments made by others. Do we have any public comment at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item seven, approval of the consent agenda for possible action. Okay. Motion by Stacy and second by Ryan. Do we have any further discussion or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, and I forgot to ask for public comment, so did we have any public comment on that? Okay. So, okay, thanks. Go ahead and move on to agenda item eight, and, and this is informational items. Do we have any comments or discussion on informational items? Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to agenda item nine, recognition of the 2017 Carson City School District Classified Employees of the Year and Certified Educators of the Year for discussion only. Dr. Delfit.
Hello? Hey, I'm, I'm live again. It's dangerous. Hi, everybody. You know, this is, I think, the funnest night of the year for me, so hopefully you will enjoy yourselves, so just sit back, put your seatbelts on. The exits are left and right, and the lavatories are front and behind. So something kind of interesting happened to me this year, true story. People of a certain age have to go through this thing called a colonoscopy. It's true. It happened to me. And I've been ducking it now, I'm 56, I'm supposed to have it, a while ago. So since I'm in charge of benefits for the school district, Deanne, who is my benefits coordinator, said, you know, Jose, it's time. And I said, okay, all right, so I've been putting it off, so I go, make the appointment, do the whole preparation, you know how fun that is if you've had one. And so I definitely lost a lot of weight before the, the time that morning, so I go into the thing, I check in, I pay all this co-pay stuff, and so I finally, you know, go under. The doc said, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna feel great. Pop will fall on you. You know, it's a good stuff, it'll make you sleep, you'll come out refreshed, it's gonna be lovely. So I said, okay, cool, I can do that, Michael Jackson did it, look what happened to him, what could go wrong, right? So I go under, anesthesiologist is making me count back, didn't make it to 99. So at the end of it, I thought, wow, that went pretty quick, but I'm, I'm a little loopy because, you know, the, the drugs are in my system. And so I say to my doctor, I said, well, that was pretty quick, so are we done? And I'm feeling a little, you know, loopy, and he goes, yeah, we're done, you did great. I said, well, did, did you find my head? That's a joke. And he said, yeah, and I'll let your wife know, I found it. So anyway, I support anyone going through that, make sure you get the good drugs. I want to thank people here that set this all up for us tonight, Renee Cortez, she did a great job setting everything up, with the Carson High School staff. I always forget her at the end, so now I'm thanking her in the beginning. So she sets up everything here, including the board packets, as you know, and the custodial crew here at Carson High did a great job. Those of you that didn't sit at these seats, there were 50 bucks underneath these seats, so you're, you're done, you didn't, you didn't do it, so. With me, we have our new public information officer, Mr. Dan Davis. We are the men in black. He is Will Smith, and I'm Tommy Lee Jones. That's what he said. I beg to differ, but he is bigger than me. So Dan put together a slideshow for us because he was at the interviews for classified and certified. Mr. Connolly helped out, and he was doing the teacher interviews for me. I was away that day, so thank you, Mr. Connolly. So without further ado, Mr. Davis, do you want to kind of go through your show and do your thing?
Yeah, I guess I can use this microphone, and we can kind of tag team it, so just going through tonight's presentation, of course, you know, can I call you Dr. J? I like the ring of that.
That's me, I'm an MVP, most invaluable player.
And then, of course, myself, and then I think we should take time to, to recognize our other two presenters and entities here as well, Brian Wallace, and Terry is unable to be here tonight.
Loretta Marsen is here?
But Loretta will be substituting in her, in her place, so.
I did, I did that part.
Yeah?
That's true, true.
Did you do this part?
Yeah.
You congratulate everybody? Okay. And you thanked everybody? All right, so tonight's order of operations, basically, the recognitions will be organized based on site, alphabetized, and then, of course, everyone's here, the administrators will, will say a few words, and we'll make the award. At the conclusion of that, we'll do final two awards, and that's kind of the big grand...
Finale.
What's that? Grand finale.
That's it.
Okay.
And we do our dance and our boxers. You forgot that part, didn't you?
All right, so now I'm going to turn the time over to our administering staff.
All right, so first up, from PDC, we have Mrs. Valerie Dockery, and she's gonna come up and present with Jessica Greener. So I took a few minutes here to kind of write down things about Jessica you might not know. She's a Libra. Her favorite food is leftovers from anything at PDC from all the meetings, and her favorite activity is keeping Mrs. Dockery sane. And if you know Valerie, that's not an easy job.
That's not an easy job, thank you. Do I need to use that mic? We're, we're good, okay. Well, good evening. I'm really excited to be here tonight to honor our district office classified employee of the year, Jessica Greener. I wish I could say the same for Jessica because she really hates being standing here right now with me, and, you know, she was like, oh, do I really have to do this? And I'm like, yeah, you really do, really do. And, you know, she likes, she likes to really fly under the radar, you know, she's happy to be here, and she's here with her, her fiance, Marcos, and her daughter, Tegan, and her mom is here tonight, so we're really excited to have them all here. And, you know, working with Jessica is really a wonderful experience, it's like having your own personal Google or Ask.com, you don't have to go online for anything, all you have to do is ask Jessica. For example, if you're a principal at a Title I school and you want to buy computers for third graders, you just ask Jessica, and she'll tell you, yes, that, that's okay. If you're a teacher traveling to a conference and you want to know if you can have your own room because the teacher, the other teacher going at your school snores, you ask Jessica, and she'll tell you, no, the district policy is you have to stay there. Yeah. If you're the district auditor and you want to know why we bought 10 cases of broccoli for Empire Elementary School, you ask Jessica, and she'll tell you that we have a fresh foods and vegetables grant to provide healthy snacks at recess. If you're a summer school administrator and you just hired 54 teachers to teach summer school and you're not sure you can really afford to do that, what do you do? You ask Jessica, and she'll tell you, thank goodness, yes, we do have enough money for that. If you're a pre-K teacher and you want to buy butterflies for your science unit and you want to get them there on time and you want them to be alive, what do you do? You ask Jessica, and she'll even go to the warehouse and pick them up and deliver them for you. Yes. And then finally, if you're the grants director and you want to be sure that your grants are in order and they're accurate and they're timely, and that hundreds of timesheets are processed every week in a timely and accurate manner, and that all the travel is processed and reimbursed, and while at the same time, could you please plan a shower for your colleague who's having a baby, you would ask Jessica. I don't know what we would do without her, she's not only just a great coworker, but just a great person, and I'm just excited for her to get this honor tonight. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
If you're a family member, you want to come and take pictures, you can, feel free.
There's so many great staff members at the district office, they are hardworking and they are dedicated, and so it's really an honor to be standing here right now. There's a lot of great people to choose from, so thank you, thank you.
Well, we really appreciate everything that everybody has done here, and I can tell this is going to be an exciting and pretty lengthy meeting. I, I forgot to introduce myself officially, or sufficiently, I should say. I'm the new public information officer for the school district, so many of you have reached out to me already for news tips or news ideas. I do have involvement with the news media, and internal communications is something I'll, I'll be projecting and proceeding on, so I'm happy to be here as part of our, our team. But, yeah, so that's a brief introduction of me. Unfortunately, I don't have the colonoscopy story to share with you either, so.
He's too young.
So that leads us to the second site, Boarderwic Bray.
So Mrs. Zona will come up, and her first awardee is Alisa Cunia. What? Oh, sorry, Boarderwick. Where am I? Who am I? Boarderwick, sorry. You know, I, I work in file rooms all day, and this is what happens. Mrs. Sims, come on up and have Alisa come up. Alisa's a Taurus, her, because she's a Taurus, her favorite food is bison burgers, you can come up, yep. Her favorite activity is interviewing for classified employee of the year in front of strangers.
So in case you are unsure of who I am, my name is Karen Sims, and I am the principal at Boarderwick Bray Elementary School. Good evening, Mr. Stokes, Mrs. Crossman, members of the board and the executive team. It is a pleasure to bring Ms. Alisa Cunia before you as the Boarderwick Bray Elementary Classified Employee of the Year. Mrs. Cunia has been employed as a paraprofessional at the Carson City School District since 2011. Mrs. Cunia has a heart for education and is dedicated to the students she serves. Since 2011, Ms. Cunia's assignment has been in the Special Education Department at Boarderwick Bray. Mrs. Cunia worked for five years in the BISC program under the lead teacher, Mrs. Teresa Mondragon. Mrs. Cunia served as the instructional assistant to the students who needed support in reading mathematics and writing. Mrs. Cunia is well-versed in supporting students' academics and social needs in a whole group and small group setting. Currently, Mrs. Cunia is working in our first, with first grade students who have academic and behavior needs. She's been instrumental in developing a behavior program based on recognizing students' strengths and interests and building their behavior plans accordingly. Mrs. Cunia has a keen intuition on how children think and what, what makes them motivated. She increased her repertoire of ideas this year by completing the Love and Logic program that was presented by Mrs. Nancy Varner, a second grade teacher at Boarderwick Bray, in implementing many of the attributes of that program into behavior plans for our students. Mrs. Cunia believes in children and believes in their abilities. She is willing to meet the children, she serves at their level, and then nurtures them along their path in a caring and motivating manner. Mrs. Cunia knows the importance of holding children accountable for their decisions, but will always address them, how they could have worked through a choice differently to arrive at a more positive place. Mrs. Cunia celebrates the successes of her students with them and with their teachers, since her students know their successes are important and recognized. I have had the honor of sitting with Mrs. Cunia the last two weeks in testing, and her patience is just amazing. I have to look at her oftentimes because I get a little not patient, so I make sure that I am doing okay. Mrs. Cunia is such a positive force at Boarderwick Bray Elementary School, students of all grade levels recognize her, speak with her, and respect her. Her work is applauded by the entire teaching staff. Parents are greatly appreciative for the additional support she provides to the education of their children. A colleague commented, Alisa is always gentle and soft-spoken when I've seen her with any student, she is knowledgeable about her job and duties. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Alisa Cunia.
First, I want to thank the board for acknowledging my fellow award recipients and I. It's an honor, much like the honor I've had working with many of my amazing colleagues and friends at Boarderwick. I've had the pleasure of working with and learning with, learning so much from teachers Teresa Mondragon, Amy Crittington, Jessica Dunbar, Nancy Varner, Kathy Childs, Christy Calvin, Christy McComber, and Kathy Zubor, to name a few. I especially want to thank our administrators, Karen Sims and Lisa Hutchison, for their support and guidance. The staff and students at Boarderwick have made me a better educator, parent, and human. Thank you.
Next up, Principal Sims from Boarderwick Bray will be congratulating Janet Hughes. Janet, come on up. Janet is a Cancer. That's her sign, her favorite food are snow crabs, and her favorite activity is catching crabs and crunching crab claws in front of Mrs. Sims. Did you know that? This is not fake news.
It's a great alliteration.
It is an honor to present to you, Mrs. Janet Hughes, the Boarderwick Bray Elementary School Educator of the Year. Ms. Hughes has taught at Boarderwick Bray for 13 years as a classroom teacher and currently is the ESL designee. Ms. Hughes has brought an energy and passion to our ESL program, which has rendered tremendous student growth in the past four years of her service. Prior to this assignment, Mrs. Hughes taught third grade with passion, dedication, and expectations, bringing her students to a love for learning that has been unmatched. Ms. Hughes has provided our ESL students and families with a safe place to learn. Her students are excited to show their proficiency in English and their desire to achieve in all aspects of their education. Ms. Hughes demonstrates a caring heart for all of her students, ELL and non-ELLs, and makes connections for them throughout the curriculum she teaches for their lives and futures. Ms. Hughes has a student center classroom where students are involved in the process of learning from the minute they step into her classroom. Ms. Hughes has students working with each other to demonstrate cooperative learning and partner collaboration. She embraces the learning by doing philosophy, and her students are provided a sound educational experience rooted in the best teaching practices for all. Ms. Hughes oversees the services for all ELL students and diligently ensures students are placed with TESL endorsed teachers or have ESL paraprofessional support throughout their school day. She has effective interventions in place for our ELL students such as Rosetta Stone's small group instruction or one-on-one pull-out instruction as, when necessary. Ms. Hughes communicates with general education teachers to continually monitor the progress of the ELL students in the general education setting. She is responsible for scheduling of the ESL paraprofessionals during the school day and during parent-teacher conferences. Ms. Hughes is diligent in ensuring that our parents are served the way they need to be served at Boarderwick Bray. At any given time, Ms. Hughes can tell the progress of each student in the ELL program because of her keen sense of professionalism in monitoring the students. Because of her diligence to her professional responsibilities, Ms. Hughes designs instruction, intervention, and engagement with the success of her students in mind. A colleague added, Ms. Hughes has proven to be invaluable to our ELL program. She is extremely hardworking and really puts an extraordinary number of hours into providing an exceptional education for her students. She has taken her responsibility for meeting the needs of the, her ELL learners very seriously as she is working hard to differentiate her reading lessons to feed, to fit each of their needs, especially our ILP students. especially our ILP students. For example, one of her students moved up in reading, but she still continues to provide fluency and comprehension work for him on the weekends. She is always willing to jump in and help teachers with interventions and ideas for student success. She is often found helping during reading night, math night, moms and dads breakfast, the school performance plan committee, and much more. I truly believe Janet is an Educator of the Year. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Janet Hughes."
I'm exhausted. Thank you. This is quite an honor for me. As a young mother, I had the privilege of being a parent at Boarderwick Bray for 16 years. I watched and participated as my three girls flourished during their elementary school at this great school. After returning back to school later in life, I then had the privilege of being hired by the Carson City School District. I have worked at Boarderwick Elementary School for the past 13 years with some of the teachers who taught my three girls. I was a third-grade teacher for nine years and have been the ESL designee for the past four years. I've worked for many outstanding administrators, Mrs. Kima, Mrs. Dockery, Mrs. Sims, Mrs. Gillis, Mrs. Squires, and Mrs. Hutchison. Thank you all for your leadership. But most importantly, throughout the years, the staff at this amazing school continues to be the best of the best. They are outstanding professionals and my friends. I have learned from them, and I'm extremely honored to receive this award as a recognition of their support for what I do. There are many acronyms in education. As I stated, I am an ESL designee at my school. ESL means English as a Second Language. I teach ELLs, English Language Learners, and in order to do this, I have to have a TESL endorsement, which means I am a teacher of English as a Second Language. In short, I teach English and English Language Arts incorporating the four language domains of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. I teach and or monitor 118 students at Boarderwick. I work with students who are at all levels of language development in order for them to access academic content. Every day is a challenge, and I love it. I work hard with my students, and we have fun together. But most importantly, I constantly try to instill a love of learning, and I work very hard to build confidence. In closing, I hope my students will look back on their time with me and remember that I was their biggest fan, and the words "You can do it." I believe in you.
The test is always if you can carry everything back to your chair.
I missed that one.
All right, from the mighty Carson High School. Are you up, Amy? Is that you for everybody, or? Oh, oh, Bob. All right. Mr. Chambers is coming up while he's coming up with Bridget Gordon. A little bit about her, she's a Sagittarius. Her favorite food is pizza with anchovies.
I'm a Sagittarius.
Oh, okay. No anchovies. CNN is not, you know, they're not accurate. Her favorite activity is staying after school with the cool kids.
That's true.
She's all yours.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Stokes, friends, family, faculty, and staff. I'm Bob Chambers. I'm one of the vice principals. Tasha Fuse on the principal is off recruiting in New Mexico right now, so that's why Ms. Fryes Middle and I are here. I really look forward to this because Bridget is feeling super awkward right now, and I work really closely with her every single day, and I think that she is more nervous about what I'm going to say than probably anything else. She did limit me to three sentences, and I'm already over that limit. So Bridget runs our after-school program. It's a grant through 21st Century. She's a 21st Century Grant Coordinator, would be her official title. Realistically, what Bridget does, she fundamentally changes at-risk students' lives on a daily basis, and I really do believe that, Bridget. We used to have a program, it was called MASH, which students were forced into our after-school program, struggling students. Bridget came to me and said, "Hey, I went to this after-school program in California. It's really cool." Like, kids want to go there. It's a neat after-school program. Could we do something like that? And just to have an employee that says, "I want to do something cool," instead of where we're punishing kids all the time to come to our after-school program, it's like, "Yeah, let's do that." And she totally ran with it. We're running a program where kids, we have about 115 kids come a day voluntarily after school. They stay till four. That's pretty amazing to get the help that they need to either recover their credits, get tutored in science, math, special ed tutoring, English as a Second Language tutoring. They can come to club activities, JPO, advocacy in domestic violence, like, all of these things that these kids have access to because of Bridget and the program that she runs. So I want to say all that. And finally, she is a wonderful, caring human being. Ms. Bridget Johnson.
This is my actual nightmare, but really, everything that I do here is credit to the staff and the students and to the incredible administration at Carson High School. So thank you so much.
Good job, Bob and Bridget. It wasn't too bad. Coming up, this is Fryes Middle and her teacher, Sean Schneider. And Sean is a Libra. Her favorite food are bananas and peanut butter, and her favorite activity is completing IEPs at midnight while texting CHS administration.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd also like to introduce Linda Peton, who is Sean's counterpart. She is a paraprofessional here as well in the Special Education Department, and Sean is Special Education Chair. And I've been fortunate this year to be assigned to work with Sean because I have about 15 years of special education in my background, so there's a lot of special education going on tonight. And this is why I feel that Sean is such an amazing representative of Carson High and for all of our wonderful students with special needs who would not be here, who would not be successful, with somebody like her with nearly almost 30 years of experience and her wisdom and her belief in these students. She just, she works day and night, 24/7. I know because we're always communicating with each other day and night. But she really does help these students transition from middle school into high school, high school out into the real world, whether they're getting vocational training, WNC, UNR, wherever their path may lead them. It's all because of Sean and her support with Linda and everybody else on our team. So here you go, Sean.
We just finished our senior project, so I wanted to know if there's any timers out there, so keep me within my time. I would like to thank my husband of 25 years and my family for letting me do what I love to do. I would like to thank the amazing faculty, staff, and administration. Without their support, I couldn't do what I do to help students succeed at Carson High. I would like to thank the Student Support Services Office for their support, because we've had many challenges this year, and I just want to just let them know how grateful we are for their support. I would like to thank the Carson City School District and the Board of Trustees for approving my hire some 28 years ago to do what I love to do, and that is to teach. I would like to thank the students and parents for their support over these 28 years. And I would also like to thank the Carson City community for allowing me to provide opportunities to students to help them rethink their possibilities. Thank you for this award.
All righty, we have Carson Middle coming up.
You know, Jose, I really appreciate the opportunity you gave me to sit in on these interviews, and it's just neat to see everyone get up here, and they're so humbled by the recognition that they're all getting. What I found interesting and also exciting was just the great work that each of these individuals offer, our school district and the children, and that, to me, was probably more meaningful to sit in and hear each of these stories. So thank you all for that.
All right. That said, we have Dr. Award Joseph, and she's kind of coming up with Kelly Anderson, who is a paraprofessional. Kelly is Aries. Her favorite food is Mrs. Cookshank's Elk Salad. Oh, Mr. Sadler's coming up too?
Yeah.
Yeah. And favorite activity is watching Mrs. Cookshank's from down the hallway. Don't we all?
Well, it's with distinct honor that I get to introduce Kelly Anderson as our Classified Employee of the Year at Carson Middle School. Kelly has been with us for 18 months, and prior to that, she was at the hospital, working in administration and not finding that true passion that gets you up in the morning. And after working with our students in musical theater and the children's theater groups around the Carson City area, she decided to become a paraprofessional, and she works with our students on a one-to-one basis. She has had three students since she's come to Carson Middle School, and I think the best story I've had about Kelly is about a month and a half into her first student, the dad, a single dad, came to me and just, he was talking about his kid's shadow, which is how he referred to Ms. Anderson, and how that shadow, that wonderful soul, had given his students, or his child, the ability to cope in middle school. And he asked me a very difficult question, if I would ask Kelly if he could put in his will that Kelly would get his son if anything were to ever happen to him. And there was a small moment where I became a little creeped out and had a hard time telling Kelly, but I think there's no better testament to the love of a human being to have a parent have that much trust in an employee of a school. And so that is just kudos to Kelly, and that kind of exemplifies exactly why she's standing up here tonight. And we are just so blessed to have a human being like Kelly to work with our kiddos with high special needs, and every day, she rises to the challenge of every new challenge we can throw at her. We do, she can dodge shoes, she can run the track, she can do just about anything that is asked of her, and she puts her students first. And that is a true benefit to our school as well as the students of the future. So thank you, Kelly. We appreciate you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. I just want to say quickly, thank you to my husband for allowing me to retire from my position for 32 years, and I'm so grateful for the supportive administration. I can't thank you enough, and thank you very much for my award.
Coming up for Educator of the Year for Carson Middle School is Tedra Cook. Tedra is an Aries. Her favorite food is jelly bellies with chocolate sauce. Favorite activity is pouring refried bacon grease into Mr. Sadler's coffee cup.
That was you. Good evening. You guys hear me okay in the back? I feel like my neck has grown or further away from the microphone. At the beginning of every school year, I, like many of my principal colleagues, challenged the staff with something new, some type of change or focus or goals for the year. The first focus for our staff this year was to innovate. Notice how that sounds so much better than change. Let's be innovative. It's much friendlier, it's cutting-edge. Those are a couple words that I would use to describe Teddy Cook. Teddy is an educator who innovates in her classroom every day. Teddy has not only survived the changes and innovations in education over the previous 15 years, but Teddy challenges herself to innovate and to improve, and she has the same expectations for her students. Teddy is a self-proclaimed technology junkie. In her spare time, Teddy is busy learning new technology tools to implement in the classroom. Teddy is a champion for all things Google Classroom and loves to share her passion for learning and technology with just about anybody who will listen. Teddy pushes her own personal limits to implement technology into the middle school English Language Arts curriculum and is always available to support colleagues who aren't as tech-savvy. Teddy goes out of her way to make sure that all of her students have access to learning. And when I say all of her students, I mean all of her students. Teddy supports our seventh-grade English learners in her classroom and ensures that every student has what they need to be successful and to be challenged in a meaningful way. In addition to her keen technological and instructional prowess, Ms. Cook excels in developing and maintaining positive respectful relationships with her students, with her teaching colleagues, and with her parents and guardians. We recently had two Title III State Department of Education representatives on campus to view a snapshot of learning for our English learners, and Ms. Cook's classroom was the first stop they made. Before the visit was over, I had a message in my email box from Teddy stating that "I hope the visit went well today. Did they leave any feedback for us? Anything they'd like to see done at the classroom level? Let me know what I can do." When I responded back that the only feedback I had received was for our school to focus on how we communicate and involve Spanish-speaking families, Teddy responded, "I have an exceptionally great group of ELL students this year with a high percentage of turnout for student-led conferences. Some of the parents came to talk to me with a student as a translator. They are very supportive. Let me know how I can help." Teddy is always looking to innovate and to improve so that her students can benefit." Which leads me to the second focus for our staff this year, which was building relationships. While not truly innovative myself, I stole an idea from an exceptional educator from Denver, Colorado, that some of you may have heard about in sharing student statements that begin with, "I wish my teacher knew." "I wish my teacher knew how amazing she is," or "I wish my teacher knew that I have to raise my brother and sister at home every night." There were many heart-tugging stories of what students wished their teachers knew. Last week, I spoke with some of Mrs. Cook's students, and here's what some of them shared with me about Ms. Cook. "I wish my teacher knew that she has made me a better reader." "I wish my teacher knew that I find a way to use my Words of the Week every week." "I wish my teacher knew that I would give her a raise if I could." "I wish my teacher knew that she makes a bigger difference for students than she will ever know." "I wish my teacher knew that she never gives up on me like some people do, and for that, she gets two snaps up." And from a colleague of Ms. Cook, "I wish Ms. Cook knew how much I appreciate her helping me transition to Carson Middle School this year. She has been a great colleague and a friend, and I can't thank her enough for all that she has done for me and for all that she does for her students every day. Ms. Cook excels in building relationships with students, staff, and parents, and she's a dynamic, influential educator with an incredibly contagious passion for learning. She helps keep that twinkle or that sparkle in the eye of our students every day, and I'm thankful to have Teddy on my team." I often tell people that middle school is a wonderfully strange planet to be on, and I think Teddy would probably agree. You either get middle school, or you really don't get it. Teddy gets it, and Teddy helps to make the middle school planet a comfortable place to live for our students every day. In my 20 years as a professional educator, I worked alongside and had the opportunity to learn from many outstanding educators. Ms. Cook is one of the best, and I'm delighted to honor Ms. Cook as the 2016-17 Carson Middle School Educator of the Year.
I'm just incredibly honored to have been chosen. It's, I feel like it's not just me, this is, I'm standing on the shoulders of giants. I have worked with some of the best. I have worked with some of the best. Some of them have retired, some of them have moved to other schools, but every one of them has shared their ideas, shared their passions, shared their inspiration, and it's made me a better me and able to do what I do for my kids. Thank you so much to everybody.
Coming up at Eagle Valley Middle School, we have Mr. Connolly. Looks like he's moving up. Yep. And with him is Denise Tamarzo. Denise is a Virgo. Her favorite food is Italian men. Oh, I'm, no, it's Italian meatballs, sorry. That's a joke between me and Denise. Goes back a long time. Her favorite activity is keeping Dr. Mold insane. Is she here? She's not, she's not sane.
She's gone insane. She's out tonight. Hey, good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. I'm honored to have Denise up here. Just quickly, she has only been at Eagle Valley for two years. How long have you been in the district?
20 years.
20 years. In just the two years, she's made a huge impact, obviously, because she was selected as Classified Employee of the Year. So, just imagine what she's done in 20. I know that she has made a lot of people proud in the district because she has worked with so many people, so to see her up here again, because she has had this award before, I think says a lot about Denise as well. So, I'm not a, I like making analogies about things, and quite honestly, I prefer animals over human beings in general. So, kind of keep that as a context. So, just to tell you a few things about Denise before I get into my analogy, she is my administrative secretary. A lot of you may not know, but she volunteers for the community, and every Christmas, she goes out and works a lot of hours on her own, collecting gifts and presents for a lot of the needy kids and families throughout our community. And these are just some of the very few highlights at the top. She does a ton of things. And she's also been a mentor and a leader to many of our people that have worked in the district for many years as well. But here's where my analogy starts. She is actually more valuable than a thoroughbred Arabian horse. Now, I'm a horse guy. I own horses. This girl, if you know anything, the first thing about horses, you're going to know that this is actually a very big compliment. Like a thoroughbred, she's very quick, she finishes tasks, she's sometimes bigger than life, if you ever have ever stood next to a thoroughbred. They are huge. While her just presence in the room, people know when Denise is there because she's got an infectious laugh, she's just positive, she's got this positive energy about her. And like an Arabian horse, if you know anything about Arab horses, they're a little psycho. Now, I'm not saying that she's psycho, but she's got to be a little weird again, working with middle school students and with the numerous administrators and teachers that she's had to work with through the years. But the best thing about an Arab horse is no matter how flighty, how spastic at times they are, how much energy they have, they're also the most beautiful horse that is out there. So, you've got to admit.
Got to come around.
Yeah, she's going to win the blue ribbon. So, but in all seriousness, though, Denise provides that consistent and positive energy to Eagle Valley. Again, she's only been there two years, and she's come in and just, you know, created this positive influence within the office staff. She pretty much does anything to support others without ever asking for anything in return. And she's been one heck of an addition for myself and for Dr. Mold and for the staff and the kids, more importantly, at Eagle Valley. I've got to admit, it's very nice when a middle school girl comes in with an issue. I can kind of say, "Denise, come here. Why don't you take this? Because I don't want to deal with 8th grade girls, I'm going to be honest." So, ladies and gentlemen, just want to introduce Denise Tamarzo as Eagle Valley's Classified Employee of the Year.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Connolly. I appreciate it. Anyway, yes, I do appreciate it, and yes, I see so many familiar faces out here, a lot of administrators that I've worked with and a lot of coworkers. And, you know, I just feel very blessed to be here, and I feel just very honored to be asked to come up here again and speak. I also just want to say that I am very thankful that Mr. Connolly allows me to, you know, be myself and, you know, go out into the community and do what I do best, in which hopefully that is to be a village, be part of the village. I want to, you know, go into the community and bring forth what we can do as a school district and as, you know, with students, the community, and the school district, I think is a perfect, perfect trio. So, anyway, I just want to thank you very much, and good evening.
Coming up next is Mr. Robert Perry. And, yeah, give him a hand. There you go, nice hug, he's walking.
This first one is true. The others might be lies, right?
Yeah, you're Libra.
We share a library, Mr. Perry, or a library.
Your favorite.
A birthday, Mr. Perry and I do, so he's got to be good.
His favorite food is sneakers, old sneakers. Check out your sneakers here. Look at, look at Lee's sneaks. Yeah, Eagle Valley. And your favorite activity is being the straight guy for Connolly. You know how that goes.
Take that for however you're going to take that straight comment. But, anyway, I am proud to present Mr. Rob Perry as our Eagle Valley Middle School's Educator of the Year. He is currently a math teacher, as well as the math department chairperson, and his basketball coach extraordinaire. He puts in a lot of hours with the basketball coaching. Like everybody that's been up here tonight and that's going to come up, Rob, I mean, obviously, everybody was selected for a reason. They're outstanding teammates, they're outstanding, you know, professionals, and we're just lucky to have them. So, he's got all that stuff as well. But, again, to bring up my horse analogy. Now, I've often called him, and he will, I think, admit to this to his face, I say, "Rob, you're one of my draft horses, dude. You're one of my heavy lifting draft horses. You're always willing to do what I ask of you." He never says to really note anything. And, you know, to be even more synonymous, he's like a 15 or a 16-year-old paint quarter horse draft. So, if you can get that, you've got this big guy with lots of energy, but you've got somebody who is so mellow and forgiving. Thank God he's forgiving because he, you know, he's put up with a lot, but he's so willing to try anything and to do anything and just, you know, get the job done and just work as hard as all the time. That's truly what I respect about Rob. Now, again, if you know anything about horses, you know everything I've said so far is a compliment. He does carry that heavy load, he never shies away from that day's hard work, he's a quiet, good-looking, studly kind of man, like a horse. And a straight man sort of way. Thank you. And most of all, thanks, Rob, he is the easygoing, mellow, everybody wants to be around the paint horse kind of guy. And no offense, but sometimes the Arabians will drive you crazy and they want to stay away from you, but that's not you, Denise. But, anyway, he is the guy that everybody wants to be a part of, and he's just, he's just there for everything. Rob, at the same time, is a measuring stick for everything I do, because I know when I say, "Hey, Rob, come here, I got to talk to you about something," or he comes walking in and Dr. Mold and I are in there with a smile on our face, and he comes in, he's thinking, "Ah, crap, now what?" Right? So, he comes in, and Rob will be the one that, we know that when Rob, after we present everything, and he is very polite all the time and he listens respectfully, but we know when he goes, "I don't know, Mr. Connolly," that's when I say, "Okay, I've gone too far." And honestly, Rob's the guy, he's my gauge, so that I know when I'm pushing things a little too far, a little too fast. I know that Rob is very, you know, professional, and I can trust his judgment, and I really do base a lot on what I kind of move forward with at our school with the help of Rob. So, I drafted him, drafted him seven years ago as a woodshop teacher. He worked for Rayleigh's for many, many, many years, a lot of heavy lifting there as well. And then, he went and got, did his praxis, became a math teacher, and I'll tell you, it's one of the best hires I've ever had, not only for professionally, because he's a great math teacher, but just for being one heck of a guy and a great male role model for my kids at school as well. So, with that, Rob Perry, Eagle Valley Certified Educator of the Year.
I'd like to thank the staff at Eagle Valley for selecting me as Teacher of the Year. I worked with a great group of professionals who grind through it every day, and I'm really proud to work with that group. I'd be remiss without saying, I want to thank my wife and my family for all their support daily. I could not do this job without their full support, so thank you. Thank the board for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly and Mr. Perry. Coming up from Empire, the Mustangs, we have Mrs. Squires coming up. And in tow will be Miriam Torres. Miriam is a Taurus. Her favorite food is anything she doesn't have to cook. That's my wife's favorite thing. Favorite activity is square dancing with Mrs. Paul. Is she here? There she is. Yeah.
This is my first time, I'm new at this, so no laughing at me, Connolly. Mr. Stokes, members of the board, thank you for having me and my staff here today. I'm so excited to be celebrating Miriam Torres as our Classified Employee of the Year. At our school, we have an umbrella, and everything we do is under that umbrella, and that is what is best for kids. And that is Miriam. If she is going to do it, she's going to do it because it's best for kids. When she started with kids, she started at the WNC Child Development Center. She's been at Empire for the past eight years as our parent advocate. Without Miriam, we wouldn't have parent participation like we do. We wouldn't have our parents joining our kids at school and being on our campus, helping our kids succeed without Miriam. She brings parents into activities. Her attitude and her positive spirit is what helps get those parents into our activities. She runs our Parent University every year. This year, we opened it up district-wide and had a great turnout, but she puts that all together herself. She provides English classes for our second language. She had, this year, with our Reach for the Stars campaign, she put together a book club for parents to come to get bilingual books to take home to read to their students, so their students were reading in English and Spanish. Without her, I don't know how we would speak to some of our parents. God bless her, she does all the interpreting, the translating, and she does it at the drop of a hat. If we say, "Miriam, I need this translated now," she does it now. She is a positive, wonderful part of our school. She works with our non-English speaking students if we need her to. She does everything. You just have to ask her. She never says no. She'll cover your duty, she'll answer the phone, she'll run the office, she'll do everything, anything that she needs us to do. And so, Miriam, I'm so thankful that you're part of our staff, and then you're helping our kids reach for the stars. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Miriam Torres.
Thank you, Mrs. Squires. I'm so nervous tonight, so as a second language parent, because I grew up in Mexico, I came to the United States in 2000, and I still learn English. My heel accent can tell that. So, I want to say thank you to Empire staff for giving me the opportunity to do what I'm like to do, work with parents and also with kids, and make them succeed in all areas, personal and in their education too. Because I really believe that to educate a parent, a mom or dad, is to bring knowledge to the whole family. So, thank you, everyone, for this award. Thank you.
Nicely done. I wish she did that in Spanish. Coming up is Toni Nielsen for Empire Elementary. She is Pisces. Her favorite food is fish and chimps, no, chips. Her favorite activity is rubbing Mrs. Squires' rabbit's foot. What's your rabbit's name?
Sasifras.
Sasifras?
Yes.
That one.
We do have a rabbit at our school. This is the second time this year I got to, I have had the opportunity to announce Ms. Toni Nielsen to a crowd. She also was the recipient of the Rotary Teacher of the Month at the beginning of the school year, and so that was a great honor for her. There's a reason why she has received these awards. She is, oh, she's going to make me cry. She is the most compassionate teacher that I have worked with in a very long time. We, again, everything we do at our school is under the umbrella of doing what's best for kids, and she does it all. She has worked with the district for the past eight years, seven years at Empire Elementary School. When I left the teaching profession to be an administrator, not the education profession, but to be an administrator, Toni took my class, and I felt so, so comfortable having her in there teaching those kids that I had to leave mid-year. She's always taught 4th grade, must be something that she loves, she does it very well. She loves kids. That's the bottom line. She just loves kids. She takes on every challenge, she takes on every challenging student. She helps kids make progress. She is a leader in technology at our school. She has worked in the X Factor program after school for years. She runs a solutions team, she's on the school improvement team. She does it all. But the best thing about Toni is you would never know she had any struggles in her class. She handles it all. She never, she doesn't get, if she gets angry at kids, I've never seen it. She just loves kids, and that's the most important thing for us. And so, Toni, I want to thank you for helping our kids reach for the stars, and thank you for being part of our staff. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Mint, hello, ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Toni Nielsen.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank Mrs. Squires for jumping ship over at Seelager so that I could have the opportunity to work for Carson City School District, and thank you to Mr. Connolly for hiring me and then giving me such a great recommendation that I got hired over at Empire. Empire has been an incredible place to work. The people there are so supportive and work so well together. Mrs. Paul has had my back on numerous occasions, on numerous things that I don't think I'd be able to get through without her assistance. The Green Wing Pod, everybody in there is like, it's a huge family. We hang out there, we can talk about anything, solve problems together, walk into each other's rooms, and I just feel very, very lucky to be able to work at Empire, and thank you very much for this award.
Part of the process when we were doing the interviews is I got to know several of the candidates, and I found, or I learned that Toni and I both lived in Rhode Island, and so we both had a fun trip down memory lane, so if you get a chance, ask her about Grindus and Fluffernutters, if you know what those are.
And if you're a horse, what kind of horse would you be, Dan? He would be a Clydesdale. And I would be a mini-horse. Coming up from Fremont is Mrs. Gillis and her paraprofessional, Rihanna Moffett. Rihanna is, and Mr. Bacon too. Rihanna is a Libra. Her favorite food is Cheetos with cheese dip. Her favorite activity is stealing her students' Cheetos from their lunch bags. No, that's not true.
Good evening, everyone. This is such a great night, when I think how lucky we are to be in this room with Carson City School District leadership, staff, and so many great friends out there all these years. I'm going to stop for a minute, and I broke one rule tonight already, Jose, so I'm going to do it again. But I may not have this opportunity again. So, with Rhiannon's permission, I just want to publicly thank Mr. Bacon for the last two years of friendship, support, and his dedication at Fremont. Thank you, Mark. Now, on to Mrs. Rhiannon Moffett, our Classified Employee of the Year at Fremont. Rhiannon is a native Navadan. She is Rhiannon is a native Navadan. She is a, she and her husband are alumni of Carson High. In fact, her husband, her mother, and her mother-in-law are here tonight to celebrate with us. I first met Rhiannon years ago when we were both at Boarderwick. And she was a tutor there. And I realized quickly that whatever job needed to be done, if you could give it to Rhiannon, it was going to get done well, quickly, quality. And there was just nothing Rhiannon wouldn't do for you or couldn't do. Then, we were lucky enough, when I moved over to Fremont shortly afterwards, Rhiannon moved over to Fremont as a tutor. And that was just wonderful. I was so pleased. And we did something really special for her. We said, "Now, you're the head tutor." Now, no money for this, but you're the head tutor. And so, Rhiannon has, over the years, been the one to plan the schedules, train people, do all the work on top of tutoring students. Well, this year was a real challenge, because we said, "We're really going to mix it up now. We're going to change our entire tutoring program. We're going to hire three new people." So, to start the year, Rhiannon got to plan the program, train the people, plan the schedule, develop the rooms, and do the whole thing, because she was the head tutor. And like everything I've ever known her to do, she did it well. She did it on time. She did it with quality. Couldn't be any better. But then, because of the type of person Rhiannon is, one more thing got added this year, and it was of her doing. But we, every year, we have a Scholastic Book Fair in the library, which is near where Rhiannon's office is. Well, we were already by October, I think it was, on our third librarian for the year. We had this scheduled. We had a new librarian starting on Monday. And the book fair was starting two days later. And it wasn't, you know, what were we going to do? So, on her own, Rhiannon went back, figured out what kind of a schedule we needed to run the book fair, went out and got staff and parents, PTA people, to help her. She had it all planned and ready when the new librarian got there and we could say, "Oh, by the way, in two days, you're running a book fair." And on top of that, Rhiannon stayed in there on all her free time for that week and helped run the book fair, so that it was a success. So, that's just, gives you an idea of the kind of person Rhiannon is. But that's only part of Rhiannon, because the majority, the important part of her job, on top of all of that, is tutoring kids. That's the educator part of Rhiannon. And daily, she works with the neediest of students. She knows what we need to do for them, and she does it. And her love for the students and literacy come across daily as we see the progress that those students make. She made a comment. She said, "I believe in the magic of books." After all, we lose ourselves in books, and we find ourselves there too. And all we can say is, "We are so glad that you found us at Fremont." Thank you, Rhiannon.
I didn't know that we had to speak until like a few days ago. And the only image that's been running in my mind since then is the scene from Miss Congeniality where she goes to get her, where she gets nominated. She goes to walk up and trips and falls on her face. And so, that kind of has been playing on a continuous loop right now. But I'm so grateful that I get a chance to work at Fremont. It is filled with amazing people. And I'm so honored right now, and I'm so, I'm just so happy I get a chance to do what I love to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rhiannon. Rhiannon reads 50 books a year, is that right? Wow, all right. Coming up is Carol Suzie Owen. She's in Aries. Her favorite food is school hot lunch. And favorite activity is trying to convince Principal Gillis not to retire. It didn't work though, did it?
This is also a pleasure. I mean, I think, you know, this is my last time to do this. And boy, did I get two great people that I get to talk about, people that I have known for a long time and admire. Suzie Owens is a second-grade teacher. She's been a second-grade teacher for 12 years. She says she loves that ability to help students cross the bridge from learning to read, to reading to learn. When you walk into Suzie's room, it is a child-centered atmosphere. It's an environment where mistakes are celebrated, because students know they are stretching to learn, and they always keep trying. She definitely differentiates, not just between groups, but every single student. You walk in and Suzie has a plan. The student knows the plan. She has high standards for them, and they reach them. She makes sure they do. And it shows, year after year, in the data from her class, the progress that her kids make. She is a true professional. She's always doing whatever it takes so that students succeed. And I'll give you an example. There were many, but this year was one. We had lined up our SFA groups. Suzie had a group that was a high-functioning group that was just making great progress, everything smooth, because of the way she had worked it and trained them and, you know, done everything to get there. But then, we were having a little bit of a teacher shortage at Fremont. And we looked and we had a group of the lowest students that needed the most help, that were the most needy. And we said, "We need somebody. These kids, we can't let them flounder. We have to help them. Who are we going to get?" And we all went, "Suzie." And then, we planned how we were going to approach her. And we sat her down and explained the situation. And she went, "Okay, that works. We need to do it. You know, if you can help me get the right things in place..." She wanted to know where the other group was going to go and how they were going to be. But she didn't hesitate. And she went from everything in place to starting over. And basically, she asked, "Just could you work with me a little bit on what each of these kids need, so I can do the right thing by them?" And that's what she did and did it beautifully. And we will always be thankful for that, Suzie. You know, I always think to myself, "What is it about Suzie? What does she do that makes her classes so special and her teaching so great?" Because I've known her a long time, and year after year, it's the same thing. She, not the same teaching. She changes with every group. And as she finds new things, she's not stuck in anything. But it's a constant quality in her room. And then, I go in and I listen. And I hear the tone in her voice, the same respectful, loving tone that I've heard her use over the years with her daughter, Megan. And that's the difference. She takes every one of those kids and she makes them her own, and they succeed because of it. I had the pleasure for like, was it two months we worked together? When I was at Seelager teaching before I went to Boarderwick, Suzie was in the room with me and we taught together. And so, I know really what a great teacher she is. And all I can say is, "If I was a kid again, I'd want you to be my teacher." Thank you. I love you. Okay, wow, try to talk after that. I love teaching at Fremont Elementary School. I work with so many wonderful, amazing people. And that in itself makes it such an honor that they chose me to be Educator of the Year at Fremont. So, thank you.
Before we move on, I just wanted to point out, during the interview process, we asked a number of questions. And it was a complete consensus that Suzie had one of the best quotes. I mean, we asked questions on teaching philosophy and whatnot. So, I don't know if you can see, but the quote that she offered was, "Love the children first." And I think that's the epitome and evidenced in your skill and teaching. So, thank you for that.
Coming up from Fritsch is, I think, Dan, oh, there he is. Mr. Brown? Did you bring Cody with you? All right. He's an important part of my joke. So, coming up with him is Tanisha Chacon. And she is a paraprofessional working with kind of, what is up with these baskets? Pretty cool. She is a Gemini. Her favorite food is juice boxes, because she works in kinder. And her favorite thing to do is drinking those juice boxes out of her kids' lunchboxes. Right? You go that way. Just follow Dan. And before Dan starts, I just want to tell everybody, we have too many Dans in the district. Too many. I'm just saying.
All right. Well, Mr. Farnworth and I were talking, and we were saying, "If we were to ever go on a picnic, who would we want to bring along with us?" And our two candidates tonight, our two people we'd love to go on a picnic with, and that's why we brought picnic baskets for our candidates tonight. So, we are very excited to share with you two awesome women tonight. Our motto at Fritsch is "A Witness My Awesomeness." And both our Educator of the Year and our Classified Employee of the Year share their awesomeness in many ways. So, tonight, our Classified Employee role is so critical to the success of our school. Now, with the guidelines outlined in SB 391, it is more important than ever to have a caring, self-sufficient, hard-working, supportive person in the kindergarten classrooms. This support is crucial in making sure that our students grow academically, not just in reading, but in all areas of curriculum. And we also have to make sure these students grow socially, so they are successfully, successful lifelong learners. Thankfully, we have that kind of support in our Classified Employee of the Year, Ms. Tanisha Chacon. Mrs. Chacon goes above and beyond her duties to support the students and staff at Fritsch. All of her support, no matter how big or small, add up to the mean, the world to students and the teachers. She is creative and uses her gift to fashion difficult tasks into manageable parts to help students understand what they are learning. She has also developed an easy system that is used in the lunchroom to expedite the process of our kindergarten students to get through the lunch line. Any administrator knows that's a difficult task. Another awesome characteristic that she is known for is her positive, friendly, and loving demeanor. Prior to joining Fritsch staff, Ms. Chacon would volunteer her time to make sure our Food for Thought students receive their food for the weekend each week. Ms. Chacon enjoyed this job so much here at Fritsch that she wanted to become part of our team. Although we feel privileged to have her full-time, she doesn't miss a chance to volunteer her time every Thursday afternoon to make sure those students get their bags. If you know kindergartners, you know that a thread or a pebble on the carpet can bring, become one of the most fascinating objects on the face of the earth. Or it takes a very patient and caring person to redirect the students back on task. So, supervising teaching kindergarten students is like herding cats. And you need a wrangler like Tanisha to corral the students and assist them with their learning. Fritsch is so very lucky to have Ms. Chacon as a member of our staff. And tonight, we would like to recognize her as our Classified Employee of the Year, because she truly deserves that recognition.
Awesome. All right, I have to bring it down. I guess a good bribe goes a long way, huh? I guess I want to make this short and sweet, because that picture is horrible. I need to just, I heard somebody behind me, I think it was Bridget, who said, "This is truly her nightmare and being up here and seeing everybody really, really is." But I do want to say thank you very much. It truly is a team effort. Our administration is great, and I absolutely love working with Subreen and Augusta Hinton. They are my two teachers. And I hope I get to work with them all the time that I'm there. So, thank you.
Coming up is Mary Wurgis. Cody, come on up, come on up over here. Mary is a Virgo. She's coming up. There she is. Her favorite frankfurter are Bulldogs. Get it? Your mascot? Yeah, it wasn't funny when I wrote it. Her favorite activity is keeping the ladies off Mr. Farnworth.
That is a job.
That is a tough job. Check him out, in a straight way.
Add that, I was most likely voted to Rob Lickerstock. He was most likely being Mr. Universe, so there.
All right. So, if you want to succeed, many use, if you want them to succeed, make yourself invaluable, go the extra mile, make them never be able to imagine what life would be like without you. Fritsch's Teacher of the Year, Mary Wurgis, has done just that. She has made herself invaluable to her students and the staff. Many of you have probably sat in a training or professional development class with our Teacher of the Year. She does not teach one year over and over again. She likes to stay fresh with her instruction by participating and utilizing strategies from many different types of professional development opportunities she has partaked in. For example, she has gone through TESL. She has participated in all the district gate trains for certification. She's been through math trains, writing trains. And now, she is involved with her Google certification. All the instructional practices that are focused on these trains are implemented into her planning and instruction, which allows for amazing learning experiences for her students. And they truly enjoy being in her class. She is a true mentor to her fellow staff members. She makes herself available to new hires and experienced teachers to support them with instructional ideas, classroom management practices, and to coach them, but also just to give them a hug. She's become a Mastery Connect guru and has provided training for staff members and support them when needed. Mrs. Wurgis works very hard to add to the culture of our school. She runs the Student of the Month program. She also works with her students to run a weekly recycling program. And you'll see them on the hallways every Thursday, wheeling it down, picking up all of our extra paper. Mrs. Wurgis helps organize staff socials to help build and sustain a positive climate for our staff. As you can see, Mrs. Wurgis is a tremendous strength to the Fritsch staff, and everything she does is greatly appreciated. Mrs. Wurgis is an amazing person and teacher that goes the extra mile every single day. And we could never imagine what life would be like without her at our school. Here's our candidate, Mrs. Mary Wurgis.
Oh, gosh, I didn't know about the speech till tonight, like even partway through. So, this is like head scratching here. Well, first of all, I love children, so that makes the job easy. I was also kind of raised to keep calm and carry on, and apparently, and on, and on. I have had a number of years in Carson City School District. It's not always a picnic to work day in and day out with children and all the responsibilities of the job. But I am very appreciative to my husband and children of my own who've endured some of those hours. So, I'm forever grateful for that. And then, I would like to thank too the trust of the many administrators currently. But I've been at Eagle Valley and Fritsch for many years. And so, I've had almost every person in here as an administrator. So, thank you for all the support and trusting, all the new and different things I'm trying. And then, I, of course, at Fritsch and truly at Eagle Valley too, worked with amazing educators. So, it's just very humbling to even be considered for this award, so in this honor. Thank you.
Congratulations. And coming up from Mark Twain is Mr. Shelby Tuttle. Mrs. Calario is out recruiting with Mrs. Fuson in New Mexico. So, Shelby gets the honor of introducing Heather Steglierino, the office specialist in the front there. Her sign is Taurus. Her favorite food is raw fish tacos. And her favorite activity is keeping Mrs. Calario sane. Right, Shelby?
True story.
True story.
Good evening, and thank you so much for coming here to honor all the wonderful people that we have here. I've had the opportunity to work with many of these great folks and truly an honor to be here. And thank you for, thank you for being with us to support them as well. I have the pleasure of introducing Heather Steglierino as our Classified Employee of the Year at Mark Twain Elementary. I've actually known Heather for... I've actually known Heather for about 25 years, when she was way back in high school. And then, hadn't seen her for a couple of decades. And what do you know, we're interviewing for an office person, and this person comes in, and she's interviewing. After the interview, I'm like, "You look really familiar to me." And she said, "You look familiar to me, too. Were you a Schwanz guy?" And I said, "Yeah, I had Colville and Bridgeport and all that." She says, "You came by our house all the time." I'm like, "Wow, what do you know, small world." So, we have known each other for quite some time. And since we brought Heather aboard three years ago, we've worked very closely together. As many of you know, we have some challenges with attendance, and Heather's my go-to person with regard to attendance. So, we work very closely together. We work on begging our parents, asking them really nicely. Sometimes, we move towards intimidation or threats. But we really leave that up to Ruth Lee, don't we? Yeah, she handles that part. Anyway, everybody on our staff really, really appreciates Heather. Her positive attitude, her beautiful smile, all those Dutch Brother runs that she makes for us during lunch to keep us all caffeinated up. Heather is a difference maker at our school. She really works hard to meet the needs of all of our staff, our students, our parents. She really has top-notch customer service. She really makes parents feel at ease when they're coming in, and they may not be too happy about something that might be going on. But Heather has the ability to put them at ease, and they're much happier when they leave. So, thank you for that, Heather. I appreciate it. She also has the difficult task of calling every parent of every student that is absent every single day. And you might think that, "Well, that's not too big a deal." But when you're calling them like for the 15th time or the 20th time, it gets kind of difficult. But Heather somehow turns on that charm and makes the conversation go well. I listen to her, and she does a great job, and we all love her at Mark Twain. So, congratulations, Heather. I'll hold this for you.
Your smile is your logo. Your personality is your business card. How you leave others feeling after having an experience with you becomes your trademark. Good evening. My name is Heather Stagliano, and I have recently been given the honor to represent Mark Twain Elementary School as Classified Employee of the Year. I have worked for the school district for five years, the last three being at Mark Twain. Every day at Mark Twain is a new adventure. With each new adventure is a learning moment. In these moments, I have been fortunate to work with amazing leaders. They lead by example with compassion and love for their jobs. They lead with encouragement and kindness. They embody what it is to be a team, for students and staff alike. From them, I have learned much. The willingness to go above and beyond helping others is one of the most important jobs a person can have. It only takes a few moments to make a positive difference in a student's, parent's, or coworker's day. I will be forever grateful for their guidance, support, camaraderie, and friendship. Thank you, Ruth Lee, Shelby, and Julie for allowing me to become part of your team. Thank you.
And coming up is Christina Born. Not a stranger to the podium. Christina is a Sagittarius. Her favorite food are Symphony chocolates. See how I got that? Symphony, music. Yeah, nobody else got it. Favorite activity: ordering baby grand pianos to fluster Mr. Tuttle.
Never. Well, what can I say? I think really that Mark Twain has the best music teacher ever. And I mean that. She is awesome. She does phenomenal things with our kids. Ms. Born is really a truly a professional music educator, and we're just fortunate to have her at Mark Twain. Ms. Born has been acknowledged by many professional groups and many, many organizations as one of the best music teachers there is, and we're grateful to have her at Mark Twain. Since she's been at Mark Twain, she's raised over $30,000. She's raised over $30,000 for our students to meet their needs in her passion of music. She's purchased 147 instruments, 155 new music books, 42 tech devices, and I see them, using them all the time in her classroom. All on her own time, she goes out and pursues grants. She goes talks to businesses to get those funds together so that our kids have an opportunity to play instruments they may never have had the opportunity to play. She's all over it. One of the great changes that I really appreciated about Mrs. Born, when she first got to Mark Twain, we actually came at the same time. But when she first got to Mark Twain, well, I did actually have the opportunity to go to a Mark Twain Christmas event. It was a little chaotic. So, I was glad to say that when she came in, she was going to change it up to where we're not doing every single grade level on the same night. So, she came in with the idea and said, "Once a month, Shelby, I want to have a different grade level and have them have the opportunity to perform in front of their families so they can glow and they can be the main event of that night." And I said, "I'm all for it. Let's do it." And so, every month, we have a different grade level come up and perform. And we really have 300 or 400 people in our tiny little multipurpose room, happy that they've had an opportunity to acknowledge their children's work. So, she's passionate about our kids. She's a leader in our district. She works exceptionally hard to meet the diverse needs of our students. She really is simply the best. Congratulations.
Thank you to, first and foremost, my family for always supporting me. They're my biggest fans from the time, you know, I could do anything. They were there in the audience for me, and they're still here tonight. So, thank you so much for my family. Thank you to the Carson City School District and the school board for the opportunities that you have not only provided me, but provided to the students of this amazing city. I was born and raised here in Carson City and grew up in this school district and am a product of this school district. And I'm very, very blessed to have grown up in such an amazing school district and had such amazing opportunities. So, thank you so much for this award. It's a great honor.
Coming up from Operations is Mr. Mark Hornic, accompanied by Wayne Schlacht. Wayne is a Gemini. His favorite food is secretly eating pork rinds during his breaks. And his favorite activity is giving his coworkers wedgies. Right, Wayne? First, you'll always like them.
I'd like to introduce you to Wayne Schlacht. He's a skilled maintenance technician with the school district. He's been here 26 years, and he split those 26 years between district-wide maintenance and these very halls of Carson High School. He is a master maintenance man, if you will. He supports Fritsch Elementary School, Carson Middle School, and the Corbett Campus. He is... Our department is very multi-skilled, multi-talented, because we have to do a lot of things to support everybody. And Wayne is no exception to that. He is very skilled at drawing plans. Helps his other maintenance guys put together plans. He's solution-driven. So, in other words, he's not just trying to fix something. He's coming up with a solution so that we don't have this problem again. And often, he'll show up at my office and pop in and sit down and say, "I got an idea." And we'll run through this idea. A lot of times, I don't listen to him, so a few weeks later, I get pictures coming over my phone saying, "See, I told you." And he's right. In fact, if you look around in here, some of this is his handiworks. If you look next to the rooms, there's numbers up there. They've been there for 25 years, and he built a scroll saw-type system to make these signs. Also, the blue man that's climbing up on the wall right there, Wayne installed that many years ago. I don't want to tell him how long. There's also quite a few people in the room here that he said, "Oh, I remember when they started here." One of them's retiring this year, Mrs. Sims. Sometimes, Wayne can seem a little gruff, but that's kind of his personality. He looks more like a joker right now. But he's got a big heart, and his customers know that. The rest of the staff knows that. And we're extremely lucky to have him in Operations. He would help anybody at any time, including somebody on the street that needs a flat tire repaired. So, it's the heart that I'm really impressed in Wayne. Our department's really lucky to have him, and so is the school district. So, I'm proud to say he's part of the Operations team, and thank you for everything you do.
Hey, first of all, those are kind words. I mean, if they were on a daily basis, you know what I mean? All right, like 26 years in the district. And as a matter of fact, I didn't even know Sue was sitting here. I remember the first day she started here as a dean. I was the maintenance guy here. So, yeah, I was two years district-wide, and then I came here for seven, then I went back out district-wide. And a lot of you guys I haven't seen for so many years out there. Shaun out in the background somewhere. And a lot of the kids that went to high school here when I was working here are now teachers within the district, which is kind of amazing. They remembered me, and then they come up, and it takes a few minutes to recognize, but wow. So anyways, I want to say that this, it's like I told Jose and Dan, and thanks for that inspirational speech at the beginning. It makes me look so forward to it. A lot of people deserve this probably more than me. So, I'm going to accept this on behalf of those guys that I work with, okay? Because I thought it was kind of a joke in the beginning. And then, when they called me in for this, I said, "No, it's for real." So anyways, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Looking forward to working with you again.
Wayne is having a show at The Nugget every night this week. He'll be taking over my job soon after. From Pioneer High School, we have Jason Zona. And coming up with him will be Mr. Philip Molson, somewhere. And there he is. So, Philip's astrological sign is Little Dipper? No, Libra. His favorite food is secretly eats pork rinds with Wayne during his breaks as well. Favorite activity is voting for himself many times to win the Classified Staff of the Year at Pioneer. Vote early, vote often. It's a Chicago way.
We have a full-time public relations guy, and he's still out of control. I'd like to introduce Phil tonight. Principals get a lot of really strange requests, and teachers get really strange requests. But I know Phil, as the main custodian, gets some weird questions. And I can tell you probably from me, since he's been working with us for one year, I asked Phil for 25-gallon buckets, kitty litter, gloves, and 20 shower curtains. And he just kind of looked at me like, "Okay, I'll get that done." And then, I got a letter from AJ, the finance guy. But seriously though, Phil is a proud and devoted family man. He enjoys outdoors with such activities as kayaking and camping with his wife. Phil's in charge of the Pioneer Campus as the lead custodian. The definition of a custodian can be translated to guardian, keeper, and protector. It is my strong belief that the safety and security and the culture of the building starts with Phil. We're highly dependent on his important position. When students and staff at Pioneer feel secure and safe, the environment is nurturing, great things can happen in the school. While Phil has only been with us for one year, his impact has been immeasurable. Phil spent his first month purging probably about 15 or so years' worth of stuff. And as he purged room by room, we could feel the stress just kind of lift. So, thank you for doing that. He voluntarily goes to student activities ceremonies. I love seeing him at JAG and all those. And I knew Phil made a big impact when he got to us, when our students recognized the fact that he was a Vietnam vet. And they thanked him, and it touched me very greatly. And they even have their own announcements, telling each other, "Let's help out Phil, and let's get the campus clean." So, Phil, we're very proud to have you on the Panther team. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Board, and thank you administrators. I've known Richard for 11 years now. I've known Jose, same way. But I wouldn't be standing here if it wasn't for my family. My wife of 41 years. I have three children, two boys and a girl, and all three of them graduated from Carson High. So, I'm proud of that. But I get along with my administrator, my staff. Like Jason said, they usually ask me for some pretty hard stuff to do, but I get it done. And I appreciate my secretary. She always has my back. And thanks. One more thing I forgot. Shelby, where are you? Alls I got to say is, "Go Panthers!" I know I worked with Mark Twain for 10 years. The Go Panthers!
It's funny how they change teams so quickly. Coming up, Mr. Donald Bland, teacher at Pioneer High School. His sign is Sagittarius. His favorite food is anything bland. I know. I need a drum. Where's my drum thing? Joe, thank you. Former drummer. And his favorite activity is making Mr. Zona blush.
Lush?
Flush or blush?
Okay.
All right, I give up.
Okay, Don has been teaching with us only for a handful of years. In that short time, he developed the first music program for Pioneer, for guitar and advanced guitar, maintains a very successful biology program where students are achieving at high rates, and he developed the school's first successful CTE program. The CTE program focuses on health science and health information management. His expertise and creative style has resulted in state leadership asking him to help write state standards in Las Vegas. His students competed at the state level, winning gold and silver this year in Reno in the medical assist category. This was a huge honor and success as his students were competing against medical magnet schools across the state. Not only did his students place at the high level, they actually helped their competitors. So, they were... Our kids don't go to state very often. We're a small program, but when they do, they do very well. And in the true nature of Pioneer, they were helping the competition. Coaching, providing materials, and I was touched by that. That's because of this guy right here. If you want to know about the culture that Don creates, you can see it at lunch every day. Kids flock to his room. They talk amongst themselves. They talk to him when they don't have to be in a classroom. And that says a lot visually. Don can be found attending and supporting student events on a regular basis. His guidance and high standards for students has resulted in their being hired at area hospitals right after graduation, sometimes even earlier. Don is highly respected by his peers. He mentors other staff and consistently shows leadership on campus. When I think of the actions of Don Bland, the word hero comes to mind. And usually, you associate hero with a firefighter, a peacekeeping soldier, police officer. But what Don has done from his classroom constitutes the highest respect and recognition. It epitomizes heroic behavior. Not only has Don inspired students to graduate and become productive citizens, he has changed the course of their lives, saving many of them in the process. To take it one step further, students who have been inspired by Don have gone on to dedicate their lives to helping other people in the community, in the area of health science. I have witnessed students' lives that have been turned around from a destructive spiral to being successful community members due to the dedication and guidance of Don Bland. So, Don, I'm honored to work with you. I hope you truly understand the impact you've had on our school, our staff, and we really appreciate you as part of the team. Congrats.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate this recognition. There's so many on our staff that are deserving. So this is really, it's kind of hard to process. But I'd like to thank everyone who put me in a position to help the clients of the community in which we all live. These young people deserve this sort of program. They deserve our attention, they deserve our support. And I really thank those of you who have put me in a position to help these young people. And I most would like to thank my wife. She got me into teaching, she talked me into it, she convinced me that it's something I could do. I didn't believe her at first, but regardless of all of this recognition and all the support, I will always be the second best teacher in our household. So thank you.
Wow. Coco Graham, how did you get him to say that? That was lots of brownie points for that, Don. Good job. Coming up from Seiliger, Mrs. Zona, who is married to Mr. Zona. I don't know why, but anyway. You could have done better, Paula, I'm just saying. No, that's not true. And coming up with Mrs. Zona is Rosanna Robertson. She's a paraprofessional ESL. Hi, Rosanna. She is a Libra. Her favorite food is platanos fritos with sriracha sauce. No, okay, I got that wrong. Favorite activity is making prank calls to Mrs. Macy's office. No? Not true either. I'm just making it up.
Can I go ahead and give you this?
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is with great pride and joy that I introduce Mrs. Rosanna Robertson as the Seiliger Elementary Classified Employee of the Year. She has been Kent's proud wife for the past 27 years and she enjoys being a mom to Rebecca and Kyle and a grandma to sweet Kendra, who we have the pleasure of having at Seiliger. In her spare time, Rosanna loves to enjoy Lake Tahoe and she loves to read her Bible. She also enjoys time with her family, including her mom and her three sisters, one of which is a twin. Professionally, where do I even begin to share the many reasons why Rosanna was selected? She has worked in the Carson City School District for almost 13 years and all of them have been at Seiliger. As our ESL paraprofessional, Mrs. Robertson has had plenty of opportunities to show how flexible and helpful she is during that time. The relationship she has with her students is critical to the success of our school and what a difference she makes. Rosanna performs well under pressure and her follow-through is impeccable. I take great comfort in knowing that she is so trustworthy and dependable and spends so much time with our students. She exhibits exceptional professionalism and is very well-loved at school. I always like to talk to our staff members and our students about the reasons why our candidates were chosen. And some comments from our pirates include, "Rosanna has always been a team player. She's a hard worker and she deserves to be recognized for her patience and dedication. We are very fortunate to have her at Seiliger." And from some students, some second graders, "Mrs. Robertson is smart, pretty, and nice." Bear with me on this part. Ella ayuda los estudiantes. Ella tiene bonito pelo. That's from seven-year-olds. So I hope what I said is that she helps all the students and she has beautiful hair.
You did it perfectly.
Oh, good. If not, I apologize. Okay. Indeed, Rosanna has demonstrated excellent customer service by showing compassion and respect toward our students, our parents, and our staff. She comes to the office in a moment's notice whenever we need help with interpreting and she has enriched our school beyond belief. So Rosanna, thank you for being a terrific example of what is right with our staff. You help make Seiliger the kind of school that people want to be at, a warm and friendly one that cares about one another. So thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank my heavenly father first. I am very grateful for this award, very blessed as well. I'm working with the most amazing and super awesome principal, by principal, Mrs. Zona, Mrs. Macy. The most amazing teachers. I believe they are the smartest ones in Carson City and probably the whole world. The angels office friends as well, Denise and Karen. I love you very much. You're so kind to our Spanish parents. Our staff and of course, the students that I love, my ESL students. And I thank you very much. Estoy muy agradecida por este premio. Muy bendecida por mi padre Dios y por el trabajo con las personas más increíbles, empezando con la directora, la vice-directora, la señora Zona, y la señora Macy. Las chicas de las oficinas como son mis ángeles, mis impresionantes e increíbles maestras, y todos los estudiantes de mi escuela. Muchísimas gracias and God bless you all.
That was beautiful. I love chicas. Chicas. Coming up is Tara Horniman from Seiliger as well. She's in Aries. Her favorite food is garlic fries at AT&amp;T Park. That's because that's what I was craving today. Yes. I knew that about you. And her favorite activity is eating garlic fries at AT&amp;T Park and making Mrs. Zona blush.
Can I do that?
Okay. It is my extreme pleasure to introduce an integral member of our Seiliger family, Mrs. Tara Sacalarius. Besides being a phenomenal educator, Tara has been married to her husband Frank for seven years and is a doting mom to Megan, Dylan, and Lance. She is a Northern Nevadaan, growing up in Minden and then moving to Carson in 1995. She holds her bachelor's degree from UNR and has taught in Carson City for the last 18 years, all of them at Seiliger, where she has taught kindergarten, first grade, a multi-age class, and currently PE. There is great value in being recognized by our colleagues and students. So Ms. Tara, I did sneak behind your back and I'd like to share some comments from our Seiliger family, from some colleagues. Tara is always kind and willing to help. She is a wonderful listener and is full of compassion. She is a wonderfully supportive, very approachable colleague who has a tremendous wealth of knowledge on teaching. Though she has taught for many years, she's still very passionate about doing her best each year. And then I kind of sidled up to some fifth graders. Mrs. Sacalarius is funny, kind, and strict, but fun at the same time. She started me playing football and got me to get better at it. How are you at teaching English? We might need your help from that. Mrs. Sacalarius is great with her leadership students. And another student said she is good at teaching sportsmanship and fundamentals. And then he started chuckling and he said he wasn't quite sure what fundamentals meant, but he knew that she was good at teaching them. Indeed, Mrs. Sacalarius exemplifies professionalism, enthusiasm for learning, and dedication to our students. She comes each day with this infectious smile and her sweet spirit radiates in all that she does. At school, she shows leadership during our weekly intervention team meetings, where she leads a team of 10 to create goals for students, help progress monitor those goals, and communicate them with our parents. When you walk into her gym, the very first thing you notice is the respectful, positive tone that she creates. She expects that all students will learn, be courteous to their peers, and work to the best of their abilities. And she can also manage to give an entire class individual feedback on their skills within just a couple of minutes. So in closing, I would like to thank our district and our school board for recognizing the best of the best in our profession. It is with great pride and joy that I present Mrs. Tara Sacalarius to you.
Well, I'm a bit overwhelmed, so I just want to say thank you for letting me represent Seiliger. They are such a great team and I really feel like they're my second family. They support me daily and so I just want to say thank you. And my family is a big part of my life and so I'm very grateful that they're all here to support me. When I was little, I wanted to be a mom and a wife and a teacher. And so I get to do all of that now. So to be recognized for that is just like amazing to me and shocking. So thank you so much and that's all.
Thank you, Tara. I have a question for Frank. Frank, who is the best teacher in your household? And there's only one right answer. He's saying the right thing. It's Tara. From Student Support Services, we have Mrs. Christie Winder, standing in for Jan, who is dealing with legal issues in Washington DC for special ed. And accompanying her is Teresa, Teresa Cox, who is a senior office specialist over at Student Support. She is a Taurus. Her favorite food is anything with eight legs. And her favorite activity, I knew that, binge-watching all seasons of Friends in one weekend. Up line, you know you do that.
Good evening, Mistress Stokes and board, family and friends. It is an honor to be here to speak on about Teresa. She is one of the most valued members in our office. She's the one that you call at 6:30 and she'll answer the phone and say, this form's here. You know, here, I got this for you, Chrissy. She's really supportive for our office. We're an eclectic group and our duties are eclectic and she will fill in whenever we ask her to. So Teresa always goes above and beyond what is asked of her. She supports staff with technology issues within the building. She will fix my printer more times than I can even count. Bless her heart. She makes herself available district-wide to support staff within campus. She's a huge support with that, especially with the new technology and IEPs, and she's always available for our district. Teresa is always willing to provide suggestions to solve problems and support improvements within our office. When working with families, Teresa is very helpful in assisting them with any needs they may have. She takes pride in her work and that is so nice to have. When we ask her for something, she provides what we need. Teresa makes sure she is always informed on current processes or changes in the process and then is a valuable resource for our staff. So a lot of our processes change, our laws will change, and she keeps up on that. So she's a very strong support in that area. She's well-versed in community resources and an advocate for our families. Teresa is kind and is a generous person and is always there for her coworkers. The office values, excuse me, values her knowledge and work and her dedication to student support. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Hi. So, hi. Over the years, because I think as I was saying in my interview, I've been here almost since the dawn of time, but there's people who have been here longer. Hi, Shaun. I have been really blessed over the last 16 and a half years to work for Student Support Services. I worked for some pretty incredible administrators, starting with Ruth, then Keith, now Jan and Christie. Our staff is phenomenal. So our staff district-wide, because I do have the immense privilege of working with everyone at every site. I get to work with our principals, our VPs, our secretaries, thank you, all of you so much, our teachers and all of our pairs over the years. So you're all amazing. And to our staff as Student Support Services, specifically in early childhood, thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa. And coming up is Rudy DeLeon. Most people don't know his first name is Jose. It's a good name. Favorite food is spicy horseradish. He's not digging that. Okay. Favorite activity is watching the movie Rudy. Nobody's getting these jokes. All right, I'm done.
So Rudy's the go-to guy when you have a problem. He needs to probably find a different way into the building because he walks my office and like, Rudy, come here. He's a problem solver for a lot of her difficult cases. And he's so kind and compassionate. So I am honored to speak for him tonight. Rudy has a quiet compassion for the students with whom he works and I feel that he is an integral part of the school team. He's instrumental in solving problems and easily gains the trust of the students and the families. School personnel has great respect and admire for his work in ethics and professionalism. Rudy is very knowledgeable in the area and expertise. Many of the other school psychologists as well as administrators and staff rely on Rudy for advice regarding some of the more complicated cases. When working with families, Rudy is very patient, often helping them fill out paperwork when they're unable to finish independently. He treats them with kindness and respect and is never impatient. I am always impressed with Rudy's ability to put parents at ease in IEP meetings and conferences. He truly emphasizes what the parents of the students give them practical suggestions to work on at home. He is warm and down-to-earth in his communication with them. He is a calming force within the school and can always be depended on for quick action and response. And all the times that I've known Rudy, I've never heard him complain about his large caseload or the amount of work presented to him. He works diligently to finish testing before deadlines and then consults with teachers and results and collaborates with them as they finish up the project. Rudy is a kind, the kind of professional who tries to better their lives of students. He is an advocate for every child in the school district. He is an extraordinary psychologist and we are fortunate to have him working in our district.
Well, I want to thank my wonderful family for the support they've provided since 2004 when I was hired by the Carson City School District. I want to thank Carson City School District for hiring me at grad school, taking a chance on a new psychologist. And I want to thank all the staff at Student Support Services for selecting me for this honor. And I want to thank, I want to acknowledge and thank all the special education educators for the work they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Just so the staff knows, when you type in J-D-E-L, that could go to Rudy, not me. And sometimes Rudy lets me know that he got an email as takenly. So be careful. Those personnel issues, you don't want to send to Rudy. All right, next up and last one up, from Transportation is Mrs. Cherie Fletcher. Come on out, Cherie. Don't be shy like you are. And accompanying Cherie is Luis Rizzo. He's a bus driver. Love that hat. Luis is Scorpio like me. His favorite food is Portuguese-Chinese fusion. Yeah, I thought of that later on today. Favorite activity is blocking his boss's car with his bus in the parking lot. That's been Luis the whole. You thought it was me.
I have to raise it up. Good evening. I'm Cherie Fletcher and it's an honor to introduce Luis Rizzo. He's a special needs bus driver and I've had the privilege of working with him. I've been at the bus yard for over 19 years and out of that 10 and a half years, we worked together. And now he's a special needs driver and I'm his supervisor. So he is a great guy. He's so compassionate, he's reliable, which is great. He just goes out of his way to find special things to help the kids feel at ease and comfortable. And that, his character, he's just laid back, easygoing. It's just, he's just a wonderful man. So Luis Rizzo.
Well, thank you. I'm very honored for this and thank you again.
Thank you, Luis. Yeah, he speaks a lot. Now it's time. We're now down to the final two awards. And what we're going to do is have the Classified Staff of the Year first with Loretta. She's busily getting everything ready. So Loretta, guess what? You get to say who it is.
And, uh, we were tasked, I was part of that, that group, to pick one. And, uh, there were so many to choose from, so many qualified candidates, it was a difficult, challenging decision to make. And with that being said, we're gonna turn the time over for these special awards.
Loretta, who is our classified Carson City School District Staff of the Year?
Well, I wasn't on the committee, so it's a surprise to me too, okay? So, um, not to mention they mixed them up back there, so Brian and I had to switch.
I did that on purpose.
Um, well, um, our plaque here says, "The Carson City School District in recognition as District-Wide Classified Employee of the Year, Bridget Jordan, Carson High School, Classified Employee of the Year."
Oh, Bridget.
Congratulations, Bridget.
Thank you, Dr. Del. So, here's what you get. You get this, what, you gotta show off the plaque first, Bridget. Okay, show it off, do the vanity thing. Very nice. See that flow? She also gets a day off for free.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it's good, and you get a hundred-dollar Amazon card for you to spend in any way you want.
Thank you so much.
And usually you can spend that on me if you like.
Totally.
Totally, yeah.
Absolutely.
She's, she's really, yeah.
Thinking of joke books I can buy now.
You guys are awful, awful audience. Bad.
Um, two speeches in a night is a lot, but I will say that, um, this is a tremendous honor because it really reflects on my school, my program, but also because, as I was listening to everyone, I thought, there's no way, obviously, that it's me, because of all of these incredible people. My grandmother, Ruth Abusrey, worked so closely with a lot of them, that I know that, like, I know what they've all done. So this is a really big honor, and, you know, I, I really appreciate it, and I appreciate, um, my boss, Bob Chambers, and my boss Valerie Dockry for really, like, helping me get to this place. So thank you, thank you to the board and to all of you.
Well, Bridget, just so you know, amazon.com is the best joke books, not that I do. Anyway, yeah, thanks for not laughing at that. Mr. Wallace?
Dr. Del.
Our Educator of the Year is?
The Carson City School District, on behalf of the board and administration, is proud to recognize as a district-wide Educator of the Year, Tedra Cook from Carson Middle School.
I, I can fill in a little space. Are you okay?
Oh, yeah, I'm just overwhelmed.
You got it, you got this.
Knowing the talent that's in this district, I, I'm overwhelmed. I, I thank you all so much. Thank you to the interview panel, um, um, thank you to my husband, who's no longer here, who showed me what a great teacher could be. He was a math teacher at Carson High for many years. And, um, thank you to Kirsten Odegaard, who's my family now, and who inspired me to become a teacher in the first place. So, I thank you, I thank you all.
What a great night. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I don't have the last word, I'm gonna give that to Mrs. Crossman.
Need to make sure I have it on. Thank you so much, and congratulations to everyone. Um, I just want you to know how much we appreciate the work that you do every single day with the students, that it, it is recognized. I think I can, I can feel confident speaking for the board that we are appreciative of all of you and all of your efforts every day. Um, do we need to do public comment? I can offer it if there's any public comment. If there's not, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 10, Requests for Future Agenda Topics. Do we have any at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 11, Adjournment. Thank you.